All right, we'll go ahead and start the Ford County Commission meeting. This is meeting number 202443. And we'll start off with a prayer led by a pledge of allegiance. We have Pastor Ryan of Osbornes, First Presbyterian Church.
Good afternoon, everyone. Show me a prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this afternoon, Lord. As I was walking from my office, of course, walking in the wind, so thank you about the holidays, all the travel. I pray that you will be with people going to and fro following the Christmas holiday and then, of course, the upcoming New Year. I know families and friends of you traveling back and forth to various communities, possibly even various states. So we just pray for travel safety, as Lord has asked us to watch over us. Lord, thinking of the New Year, as we move into the new year, we ask for safety as the people will be out doing a variety of things. Just pray that you keep people safe, watch over our law enforcement, first responders, and just guide us and direct us as we move into this new year. Lord, as we move into the new year, we ask for prosperity, bless us in all that we do. I ask to just watch over our county, Lord. So I always pray for the communities, for the people that comprise our county. As we look to 2025, we just ask for your blessing, Lord. I ask for you to be with the commission moving into a new year. I pray that you get the wisdom. I always pray for our staff, for our management. I just ask that you watch over them, guide them, and direct them, Lord. So we just thank you for them, for your service, for your safety, for your blessings. In 2025, may all that we do bring honor, glory, and grace to him and to his great name.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ryan.
Happy New Year, Mr. Ryan. Happy New Year.
All right. Next up is the consent agenda where we have meeting minutes 202442, the credit card statement, additions and abatements, and a cereal malt beverage application for Andrew Del Torre. Doing business as Rancho Santa Fe LLC and Leovardo Del Rio. Doing business as Rancho Al Palomino LLC.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve the minutes or approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second it.
All right, with the motion seconded, any further discussion? Hearing that, I'll call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We'll move on to claims for payment. This amount of $746,631.10.
Make the motion that we approve the claims for payment as presented.
I'll second that. All right, with the motion seconded, I'll call a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Motion passes. We're at the part of the meeting where we have open public comment. Please limit it to five minutes per individual, 15 minutes per topic. Final action may be deferred until the next county commission meeting unless an emergency situation does exist. If anyone wants to come up and speak to the commission, feel free. It's your time. I can never tell who's behind the door.
Staff.
Staff. All right, we'll move on. Oh, we got it.
I'd like to make one observation, I guess, for open public comment before we leave. I think this is Commissioner Snooks. This is going to be your last meeting?
This is going to be the last meeting.
That's what I thought. I'd like to take the opportunity to thank you for your service on this commission, to the constituents, to the citizens there that you represented. I appreciate your service to the county.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate that. All right. We move on. There's no unfinished business. We'll move into legal counsel.
Good afternoon.
Good morning.
We have two resolutions before the commission this afternoon, both related to the Pioneer Creek Wind Project, Resolution 202444 and 202445. Both of the resolutions extend the conditional use permit. One that was granted back in 2016 and one that was granted last January. Since we, since the commission modified the zoning regulations, the conditional use permit is with now for one year, with the potential for two one-year extensions. Pioneer Creek is asking that their conditional use permit be extended for an additional year.
All right, I'd make a motion to adopt, I guess, both resolutions. This is 202444 and 202445. This is in regards to the time to begin construction and development of Pioneer Creek Wind Farm as requested.
I would second the motion.
With the motion seconded, any discussion on it?
So Glenn, this was originally issued in 2016.
Yes, the conditional use permit was issued in 2016. At that time, we didn't have an expiration date on conditional use permits, you know, in terms of even taking action by the commission to revoke a conditional use permit, et cetera. Then when Pioneer Creek was taking a look at this, they decided to expand footprint. Remember, they have the project. So the 2016 footprint has a conditional use permit, and then there's a conditional use permit for the expand.
For the expansion. And what were, with these, we're approving the expansion part?
Both of them. We're extending both conditional use permits.
Okay, so the one that was in 2016, what kind of a timeline is it on then now?
It's on a one-year.
It's just on a one-year.
Excuse me, I didn't mean to interrupt. They also had the commission approve a new development plan for the 2016 project.
Any further discussion? All right, hearing done, I'll call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, we'll move into the county administration board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item is the K Camp annual contribution. It has the amount of $459,586.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve the K Camp 2025 annual contribution.
I will second that and with some discussion. I was going to see on this, because I know that this has changed drastically, on the real and personal property, including equipment breakdown in time element, I would like to see if on the deductible, maybe what a $10,000 would look like versus the $5. And then where it says, under general liability law enforcement activities, we have a $0 deductible on general liability and a $0 deductible on law enforcement activities. What would it look like if we moved that to maybe a $2,500 deductible? Because I think when we start looking at this, just in that one line item, it's $109,000. I believe when I started this commission, this whole bill used to be $180,000. And we're over $459,000. I mean, that's, this has really changed, so.
Well, remember, we're also part of the pool.
Yeah, yeah. So we're sharing this with everyone else. But if there's ways to bring that down, just maybe through a little bit of a, and I would say approve this if that's the vote. Move forward, but let's see what those changes would do. They could take off $30,000, $40,000 of this.
I'll do it.
So what is, what is this premium compared to what it was last year?
What was the last year? I didn't bring it with me. Did you bring it?
Are we looking at another increase again this year?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yes, it's more than it was last year.
Okay. Let me look. So I again have to take issue with this. Trying to be respectful of the sensitive nature of the issues we talked about at the last meeting, that didn't particularly go the way that we wanted it to go. And then we come along here with a substantial increase on our premiums again. I think we better be sitting down and then have another talk about this.
This year was, or 2023, it was $342,000. And 2024 is $390,846.
I don't understand how we can continue to go along here making decisions like that that perpetuate this kind of result.
I think, without saying too much, I think Counselor Curris made that very clear to K Camp.
Go along your feet and rely on the team. It's not funny.
Thirty-four percent increase. All right, well, we have a motion in the second. I'll call a vote. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item number two is the K Work Workers Compensation Insurance. That is $225,600.
And Vanessa, you all present whatever you need. Chief Boyd will be on to answer questions, too.
I make a motion that we approve the premium for K Work for 2025 work on Scott.
I'll second that. And just as a point of discussion on here, if we've got a five-year loss ratio of 84%, I don't understand how we have an experience modification of 1.19.
And that increased from last year. So we do have some things that we're going to be working on this next year, looking at where we've had injuries in the last year and focusing on maybe training at those facilities.
Okay.
So we can bring that back down.
Excellent. All right.
Can, can I get an explanation about what, what that means, the five-year loss ratio
So the, so it's the experience modification rate, and it's, it's pretty much like a safety score, kind of like, you know, our credit score. So it looks at how many, how mu, how many injuries we had against, how many possible injuries we may have. And it's also based on our payroll. So, I mean, our payroll has increased in the last couple of years, too. So one million, so. So those are the big things that make our insurance.
So the 1.19 experience modification is they figure out what our number is, and then they add an additional 19% on top of that. So they're already being this for a 19% increase this year over the normal rate of 1. So that's, that's comparing us to the rest of our pool. So they're saying we're a high risk.
Is the 84% a comparison to the rest of the pool as well, or?
Typically, when you.
Eighty-four percent of what?
Yes.
What does that number?
So typically, when you bring in like a loss ratio, what you're looking for there is 2% in insurance is a good ratio to win by. So that's like a 80% loss ratio is still okay. But when you're starting to say 84, to me, that's a phenomenal client. That's somebody that's really good at what they do. Because they're, they're still making money. They're, they're pulling the money into a pool. They're only using about 84% of it is what they're expecting. So they're making profit, and that's paying their overhead, that's paying all their, their management fees, everything.
That's, that's what I was trying to get to, is what is, that 84% represents something? Is that good or is that bad?
That's good.
Okay.
That's good. So I represent a mutual company. We're trying to operate in a 95% ratio. So if it's 95 or less, that's, that's A pluses all around.
Two.
Eighty-four is fantastic, but we're still looking at a 1.19. So realistically, our rate should be under $200,000. Actually, even less than that, like $175,000. And they're being as that $225,000. You know, who writes this stuff? Makes it so complicated? Yeah, Rita? Thank you. She didn't want to sit down for that. She's standing on business. That's right. All right, we have a motion second for the workers' compensation. I'll call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
Item number three and four for Ben Ramon.
Welcome, Ben.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. Got three items. My GPS equipment has died, and I need to buy a new GPS equipment. They've had me go out for bids. I received two bids. First one is a company called Laser Specialist in Olathe. And they met all of my bid specifications at a price of $22,750. The other company is out of, make sure I get this right, Calgary, Alberta, place called Their bid, they need all the specifications that I gave, and their bid was $18,819. Either of these would be acceptable to me as a surveyor. The equipment is comparable, software will be very similar. The real difference between the two would be, for the company out of Olathe, Laser Specialist, I dealt with them with my private survey equipment for 15 years, and I know the company, and specifically the salesman that gave me this bid, is very responsive, and they are in-state. Benchmark is, I had a little bit interaction with them. They bought a used unit from them back in May. They were very responsive. They know what they're talking about. And I know two private surveyors who have their equipment, and they're very, very pleased with the performance of their gear. So either one of these would be great. I think it's mostly a case of if you prefer in-state or out of the country, or if you prefer to save.
Well, then what's, does the equipment last a while, all right?
Anywhere from five to 10 years.
Okay.
And this is the newest, this is seventh-generation stuff, which is way better than everything that's been available for the last 30 years. The stuff that I'm replacing is fourth generation from basically 2015. This stuff is at least near as good, just a basic stuff. But the life expectancy is, in a private company, for example, if you had a desert crew running, I would expect to replace it around three years. My use is much lighter, and I'm the only person touching the equipment, so it doesn't be seen getting out of the truck and hanging around with somebody else's stuff or stuff. I would be surprised if we didn't see that. Recommendation wise, I'd have to go with a lower price for the Canadian company. Again, I have a really good relationship with the Canadian company.
Tough decision.
Yeah. I was sitting here thinking the same thing. Much rather not spend the money outside. Rather not spend it outside Ford County, but really not really spend it outside the state. I sure as hell don't want to spend it outside the country. Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve laser spec.
All right, with the motion seconded, I'll call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Next item is a couple of tractors for Knox Street Department. I asked for commission to go out for bid on two tractors. We're running six tractors at Knox Street. The oldest of those two are in pretty poor shape and limited utility when it comes to mowing, because we're just down on power. Since we talked two months ago, I reevaluated my equipment situation and talked with my mowers, the guys who are actually operating equipment, and tried to figure out, okay, if we've got four mowers, people running the equipment, why do I have six tractors? And the answer is because they're old and they break down. Six to keep four in the machine. The four that remain now are all in good shape right now. I've got two John Deeres that are about five years old, and I've got two cases that are eight or nine years old. And they're all performing well right now. What I would like to do is buy one tractor now, and then in 2025, go out and get it on one more tractor sometime during the year. And then every two years, start a rotation plan so that I have five tractors on hand at all times. I can mow with four, and if one of those goes down for maintenance or repair, I'm going to spare it. It's six or eight years old. I'd like to get on that rotation now instead of buying two tractors. Have two tractors sit around. I would do that plan. Meanwhile, I went out, I split the bid into two pieces. I asked for a 120-horse tractor and I asked for a 130-horse tractor. A 130 horsepower tractor is suitable for all of our mowers, which is the only application we do. I received a bid from Can Equipment here in North City for a brand-new 2025 Maxum 135. It does need all of my specifications. With the two-year standard warranty, the total price is $141,397. With the extended warranty of five years, 4,000 hours, the total price will be $153,197. That tractor will be delivered sometime June 2025.
What, what was the 141? How, how long was warranty?
Two years.
Two years.
Two years, 2,000 hours.
And the other will be five years?
The extended warranty is five years, 4,000 hours. Now I'm running more than 1,000 hours each. The other bid that I received was from American Implement, which is the John Deere equipment. They need all of my specifications. Their net price for the two-year, 2,000-hour warranty is $198,6813. Their bid for the tractor with a five-year warranty, 4,000, 4,000-hour coverage is I don't have detailed specifications on the case on the Maxum 135. I understand from the salesman down there that that has their premium cab. I didn't know how to spec. I need, if my guys are going to sit in this cab at 105 degrees for eight hours a day, I need the best cab I can get. I didn't know how to spec that. So it's, John Deere came in with their premium cab with all the bells and whistles and the electric switches and everything. I think that's a little bit of what's going on in the practices, but that's the six-hour model of John Deere sales. The case is at $141,000, is just their Maxum 135. They say it has the, a lot of the premium features, the ride and suspension.
Premium seat, that kind of stuff, right?
As we tell them, it's not, they didn't send me specs like John Deere did, but that's what we're telling them to talk to them. My recommendation is the Maxum 135 at $141,397, or with the extended warranty, $153,197.
And your thought on the extended warranty? Is that roughly getting four years because of the 4,000 miles warranty?
Right. We will get three years.
Okay.
We might get four. They're full coverage extended. We got one from both places. I'm happy with the service, responsive on parts, in repairs. Relationship is good.
You said June 2025 it'd be delivered?
Both are targeted by the June delivery.
Ben, when, when would you look to purchase the next, after June, I guess?
Probably have the new tractor for a month or two. I'm assuming that the season will wrap up near the end of August for the heaviest mowing for the summer. I have good feel for how this tractor will be days. And that's probably, I think, enough in eight times so that when April rolls around again, I've got another new machine I need to start the season. So that would be probably September if I go out for bid.
I was, I was just wondering if we were somehow able to authorize the purchase of those tractors, roll the delivery out on the second one into the 2020, into the next one. Would they honor the lead of the, or the price if, if we agreed to the purchase of both of them right now?
I don't know if I had two new tractors, then I'll lock them on the grid.
What you could do is encumber one for next year. They're not charging much. Encumber the one this year and make that one next year, by the next year's budget.
That's what I was meaning, is you actually spend the money and purchase the one that you need now, agree to the purchase of the next one, and, and cover that. But don't take, don't pay for it, don't take delivery on it until you want it, whatever you want. We'd get put off into the next budget year, wouldn't be sitting on your lot, ready to use by somebody, you know, if you want to keep it held back. But if we could get it and, and get this price honored that way, I'm just saying we may save ourselves a little bit in the increase in price by waiting.
Certainly asking.
You need to ask them before we close the meeting.
Is it Can Equipment?
What I would say, what I would say is that we asked to go to bid for two tractors. So we have the, we have the budget for two, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
We, we and I talked about this last week. And so, we were kind of prepared for you guys to, to come up and decide the two. So, we can buy both now. We have money budgeted for it now. We don't have to encumber anything or work with any career schedules or, we're just making certain we pay for both. Now, do you approve it now? You can buy both of those tractors. You, you can ask them if you can buy two of the same one.
The other bid is for a hundred and twenty horsepower. Very similar prices, about, less than ten thousand.
For a lot lower? How old?
About, about over running right now.
What, what brand?
Uh, one of each, one, one John Deere and one Case.
The price is close.
Right. Like, uh, one forty versus one forty-one and one ninety-one versus one ninety-eight.
Wow.
I think for the money, you're gonna prefer a hundred and thirty-five horsepower tractor.
I think so, looking for, we've been running on a hundred and fifteen, hundred and thirty-five for the last ten years. It's fine telling you all the names, but you can, you can, you can pay for sixty dollars a day truck.
Yeah, we gotta, we gotta leave the door. We can't close the door. I know the noise, but it's no debating. We gotta leave the door.
So, I, that's the way I would suggest it, is we authorize the purchase of both of them to set your next, you set your next delivery up whenever you'd like.
In, in the budget is over four hundred?
Only over wouldn't be an issue either.
You just take possession when, when you take possession?
Have enough money next year to do the same thing, so he could buy one tractor, like he, exactly what he said.
Yep.
It's not gonna affect the budget in the next way, either way.
Right.
It's none of a, yeah, it's, they're a letting fund, he's a letting fund, so it's gonna go back to the same spot. If he spends it now, it's okay. If he waits till next year, he'll charge the, the twenty-five budget. This, this not gonna be any worse.
Yeah, I just wanna try and take advantage of it.
Yeah, that's right, yeah. Saying that, the longer, the longer hours would be nicer as well. I mean, as we're looking.
Morning. No, I, I think, I think the smart money is on the longer one.
Yeah, I mean, this is a daily use.
Yes. And it's tough use.
Yeah.
And it's not.
It's not. It's not planning season. Harvest seven months.
Ben, do you wanna take five minutes to see if we can call them to see if they have two tractors or do you wanna do one tractor for each?
Ideally, the John Deere and the Case in the one thirty range. I've got a guy that prefers the Case and I've got a guy that prefers the John Deere. I must have bigger motive. And yeah, if they have one thirty and one thirty-five, then, then. Power difference and the lack of price difference, yeah, I'm gonna have the.
I don't know if we can, I don't know if I can go with. He ain't liking the John Deere fifty thousand dollar difference though.
I feel a motion coming.
I'm just trying to figure out how to work that.
Yep.
I would make a motion to approve the purchase of two of the hundred and thirty-five horsepower Maxum tractors from Can Equipment with the five-year, four thousand hour warranty. One hundred and fifty-three, one ninety-seven. Delivery free to be determined by Ben Rumbow.
Second then. With the motion second, any further discussion? Here it is. I'll call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Can you force?
I can't hear you.
Okay.
I couldn't hear what he said.
That's right. So, that was, it was a motion to purchase two of the Case tractors.
I second.
Alright. Next. Thank you. Next one is for IT Director Matthew Brackler.
We just have our annual renewal for the, the email licensing system. This is, it's invoiced now, but it is, this is like a hundred and four at the start of the twenty twenty-five this year. And that's, that's the amount of eighty thousand and fifteen dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Alright, I'd make a motion that we approve the Microsoft three sixty-five E-one licensee renewal invoice.
I second.
And with the motion second, any further discussion? I'll call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Happy birthday, Dady.
Oh, thank you. We're gonna slow all this, uh, closing of the meeting real quick, so Ben can call to make sure they can do those two tractors. Okay.
I'm gonna have to call a special meeting and bring you guys back to change the motion.
So, do we sing, sing happy birthday or what?
We should.
We should have paid too.
Paid would be nice.
I, did you bring some?
With no raisins.
Well, that was my date.
Y'all didn't have enough dessert at Christmas?
No, never got any. Never.
No answer.
You got a number for Jake? Got a number for Jake, if you, store manager.
You looking at me about what?
No, I'm looking at the calendar over there, Kate.
Thank you. Thank you. I thought you was wanting me to do something.
No.
I was gonna say, first thing you can do is come kick me out. You trying to ask me to do it?
Yeah.
Yes, you can get two.
Who?
At that price.
Thank you.
Pretty sure that message got.
Oh, we're not done. Just, we're gonna help you out.
Upcoming meetings, we have the swearing-in ceremony, January thirteenth at nine AM here in the Government Center. We have the New Commissioners of Orientation, January fifteenth and seventeenth, that's Hotel Topeka in Topeka. The second, uh, commission meeting of January will be January twenty-first. And the Community Facilities Advisory Board, that will be, it's timed to be set for January twenty-second. We have the Kansas Legislative Policy Group, the twenty twenty-five Winter Meeting. That will be Janu- January twenty-first in the hotel, in, in Topeka, at the Hotel Topeka. And we have the twenty twenty-five Local Government Day, January twenty-second, that is also in Topeka. That's all I have for the admin report. And our next meeting is the sixth, right?
The, yeah, the next one is the sixth, but the second meeting is the twenty-first. And on the sixth, Kenny could still be at the sixth. Right?
What'd you say?
Ja- January sixth would be officially your last meeting if you wanted to come to that.
You hope you can come to it, right?
Yep.
Okay. January the sixth.
Alright, well, I'm sorry. I thought today was your last one.
Yeah, right.
Well, help me out.
Have we adjourned?
I'm gonna make a motion before he leaves.
I got it. I need January the sixth.
Alright, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.